Mm-hmm.
But she's certified, she's certified. But she, and she's even certified. Well, she's done everything she needs to be. Good idea. She's teaching. The state has a process to do. We've just found out. I'm trying to get an idea of before.
Yeah.
By means of.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Oh, he might have. I don't think he listed it in the agenda. I just talked about it at the meeting usually.
Yeah, and I put it in my report for you guys.
It's on there.
Yeah. But on this form, it wants the minutes.
Yeah, it's in the motions. Yeah, they're usually put in there.
Yeah.
For that. Oh, it's just pretty cool.
Okay, thank you. I'll sort of make yourself.
I guess we're on, on the air.
Yes, sir.
And chances are, raise your goal.
Okay.
To me.
Certainly.
Get to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Seems like it's been a long time since we've had a meeting. But, I'd like to welcome everybody. Um, this is the time on our agenda where we have a chance for public input, and I don't think anybody's notified us when I speak. I don't see anybody here looking to speak. So, normally, individuals are given three minutes to share information with the board. Since there's nobody here tonight to speak, we will call that item closed. Under the consent agenda, did we have any additions, changes to the consent agenda? Or the agenda itself?
Yeah, so I wanted to add, item, discuss and approve an administrative waiver for Caitlin Free's fifth grade. In my report, I said that she had actually met all, she is a certified teacher, teaching outside of her area, but she's actually just waiting for DOE approval, pending application for the area that she's currently teaching. So, we anticipate that, sure, as long as it takes to process.
So, at some point, we'll need a motion to approve the
Yep.
application for waiver. Where do you want to put that, the agenda?
Put it in, want to put it in either before or after administrative reports, either on.
If I could, right after administrative reports.
Okay.
Three, four, four. All right. Any other changes? Is that okay with everybody to change that? That, all right. Um, otherwise, it's the approval of minutes, the financial reports, open enrollment applications, exemptions, those standard items, and the adopt agenda as amended. Any, is there a motion to do that?
So.
I have a motion from Dustin, is there a second?
Second.
A thing from Travis. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Emotions carried? Um, I was just going to comment, I did get the last, this last month, I got a tour of the Compton Unified High School in Compton, California, and it was actually, have a brand-new, $240 million high school. Beautiful building, beautiful. So, they even got some swag to go with it. They gave us a little, little fans. T-shirts. But, boy, and it's rather impressive and things they're doing with robotics, the drone program, they have an underwater drone program in their swimming pool. Campus, a lot of sponsorships, like the wall, winning their CTE sponsorships. Um, this Prism that does the VR, they were doing VR in their math classes. Very impressive. Um, had a good conference out there, California, actually. Good information, but, and then I also got to hear the new, the current Teacher of the Year speak in Salt Lake this, last weekend, from Pennsylvania, a little school in Pennsylvania, middle of Pennsylvania. Really has a heart for the kids, that lady, and, um, she's been teaching for about 15 years. Um, I think it's middle school, but really, uh, has a good heart and good speaker. That's always a really good speaker when we hear the Teacher of the Year speak. That, that's actually a retirement conference, but a lot to do with schools. But, there's some stuff that I was working on this last month. Um, there is a rural, there's a webinar coming up in a couple of weeks about rural schools, NSBA is putting on, if anybody wants to sign up for it. I think it's free. I'll probably have information if anybody wanted to. It's just like a one-hour webinar, right after lunch one day. Not this week, it's next week. So, anybody's interested in that, that's all I have for announcements. I guess I'll turn it over to maybe Kim for some business manager work.
Okay, I did attach to my report the final request that I submitted to Walworth County for taxes. Um, and along with that was the actual whole budget that we republished, because we're required to publish any changes from when we had our preliminary budget to our final budget. So, I had business with students, we just decided to publish the whole thing again. Um, with our annual report, there's that teacher compensation and the general fund cash balance requirements. We had met both of them for this last year. Our student count was, um, that last Friday in September. Um, preliminary count was 605. Budget was estimated at 563. You know, so we were on, definitely on the lower end. Um, we will have our audits starting next week. They plan to be here Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then we did get back, we had a summer food review, administrative review for our summer program. They had found three items. Um, and I submitted everything that we had. Wasn't that we didn't have it, we had it done, we just didn't submit it when they, or, they didn't ask for it, so I hadn't submitted it. So, um, I didn't submit everything, and they closed it out and said we weren't good for the summer review. Next year, we do have, um, a normal food service. We have our five-year summer, or five-year review for that. So, they usually, um, send out a whole eight pages or whatever, everything that's required, and then we have time to upload it, and then they do come on-site. But, we should be, be there for that too. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
So, you made the accountability?
Yes. And I, I attached the whole state, all the schools.
I saw that.
So, you have a chance to review where other schools are at as far as, like, the average salary, that other schools, our size are, um, where their salaries are at. We were about seven, between $1,700 and $1,800 above what we were required to for our, our salary. You know, so that's kind of nice to know, that we have a little bit of, um, room.
It looked like everybody made their accountability on the salaries in the state.
And I think only one school on the general fund.
I thought there was a couple.
Um.
Miller.
Reminded me, I only, I guess I only thought of one. You know, it was a quite small school.
Yeah, and they weren't much over.
And that's tough, when, when the new administration comes in, and they don't have any background as to how, how all that works, it is kind of tough for, you know, schools to know where you're at.
Yeah, I've seen that before. I see, um, Miller was slightly over, and so was Frederick.
Maybe they didn't have new administration, I don't know, but it is a, it is a requirement.
Yeah, unfortunately, it makes more work for me. I sit as chair of that board that sees that. Um, I'm assuming they'll probably appeal the thing, but, yeah. Um, count was 605, is that the final count?
Well, it's a preliminary count, yeah. We'll verify everything, and then, um, they'll send out stuff for superintendent talk to verify by the end of, um, September.
We're budgeting, what did we use?
By the end of October.
Didn't we use like 595 on the budgeting this year?
I thought it was 565.
Maybe it was lower, maybe 595 was last year's.
You said 563?
Yeah, I had put that in my preliminary, you know, that, that, um, paper copy of the, how we always present that, in my, in the right column. I thought it was 565.
That's quite a bit higher than that.
Yeah. That's what I had in there, but.
Well, I know we want to be conservative on the budget.
Right.
But that's, that's actually changed the budget slightly.
Well, and, you know what, you don't get local, and you get through the state, so, um, you know, it balances out.
Who puts this in the next category, and accountability also, the, um, the lower, the reserve? It's thirty percent.
Now, we're at thirty percent.
Thirty, yeah. Okay, any other questions of the? Otherwise, yeah, I guess we move on to the superintendent's.
Um, I put the principals' reports in. Were there any questions on, on those reports? I sent them when I sent my, um, report. Okay. Um, so, strategic action plan update. Um, we'll continue to solicit and accept surveys from parents and community members until October 17th. At that point, Tom Oster and his crew will start to disaggregate that information, and hopefully, we'll set a date for when we're going to start to, when we're going to meet and start that process.
Any word on how participation has been?
Slow. So, a hundred percent staff, ninety-seven percent students. Um, and I think we had like maybe 24 parents at last blush, and seven or eight community members. So, we kind of put it back in the paper, and, uh, posted a bunch of stuff around town again, different places, and headed out for one parent, during parent-teacher conferences. So, hopefully, we'll, we'll get some more in. What's that? Could do that, for sure, yeah, good idea.
Is there anything to follow?
Uh, yeah. Um, I'll email you, I'll email it to you.
The same players around town, different businesses.
Yep. We continue to advertise for Title VI coordinator position. Um, it's in the paper, on the radio, on our website. At this point, we have not received any applications. Um, we had a policy committee meeting, um, October 9th, and we started the, uh, process of the new policy and comparing with the old policy, and we scheduled another meeting for November 3rd. Um, we'll probably be meeting every three weeks or so to try to get that on pace, to get it done. When it's all, when we're all done, then we'll turn it over, and there'll be, um, a section at a time. We'll try to get it to you, and, um, we're not going to switch until it's all done though. We're not going to start that process. So, the existing policy will continue to be in place until we're done, until the committee's done and ready to make recommendations to the board for that. Just a reminder, uh, learning with Larson, if anyone is interested in, um, attending that, just let, shoot me an email, or just tell me, and I'll have, make sure you're signed up and all that. Um, I think we're going to meet in here, like, for, when he talks. Or we could actually just do it while, depends on what's going on. Anyway, I imagine that he's.
He's here, here.
Yeah. Um, he'd out there, come in here afterwards. But if you're interested in that, uh, please let me know, and I'll get you signed up. Okay? Okay. Um, accreditation review, we continue to gather stuff. This, um, waiver is another piece of that, that we're trying to get as much of that cleaned up before they come in January as we can. Um, and, uh, we just, I mean, Caitlin is certified, but she's not certified in what she's teaching, so we, we worked through that. This will be good, as far as that's concerned. Um, and we're probably three-quarters of the way going through and updating the things that we need to get ready before January. Um, so, after we had all that rain, we had a bunch of, um, leaks in different places. There were leaks here at the high school. Um, that's a newer roof, and there was an estimate that I sent out with the, uh, nine estimates that I sent, or whatever it was. But one of them was to get a bunch of scuppers replaced, and to do some patching and so on, on the newer roof. I think it was about $6,500. And then, um, I didn't ask for this, but the roofer kind of went by, um, the middle school roof, the fabric is showing through, and it's, you know, it's in bad shape, so we're going to have to plan. And he just, um, the estimates were based on each section of roof. Um, and again, if we did it all together, the total would be about $350,000, but there is a chance for some savings with that if we did multiple areas at one time. So, um, that's something we'll continue to, to talk about. We are going to get the $6,500 stuff that we can get done, we're going to get that done, so that, um, we can, we can have those repairs made, so, uh, we won't have leaks. We actually had some water run right down the wall of one of the high school rooms, but that'll be, he said it's an easy fix, so we'll see.
We were talking about trying to maybe, you said that we're next summer with that bigger roof, because it's getting to the point where we're going to have to do it really soon.
Yep. Yep.
Hopefully, to get that actually into the next year's budget from July, starting next July.
Right. Yeah.
It's a pretty significant chunk, trying to cut out $300,000, $300,000.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have a better idea of where we are, you know, as the year goes on, towards the end of the year, to kind of, as we're starting to talk about the budget for the next year, so, kind of have an idea of what we have left. It's a heavy lift, obviously, $350,000. But it's, it's time, you know, it's, got to get it taken care of. Um, I included the in-service schedule for Monday and Friday, and, um, we had good trainings, we had, um, the Tiger Foundation come in and present, and, um, we did safety training, a good chunk of safety training, um, and curriculum, reading curriculum work, building meetings. So, we gave teachers some time in their rooms to prepare for parent-teacher conferences and to catch up on things. This is a time of the year that there, you know, there's a lot going on, so a little bit of extra time for the staff was needed to, to allow them to get a few things taken care of. And, um, I have high school data for parent-teacher conferences, and we're about at 32%. Um, and I'm still waiting for elementary and middle school data, but when I get that, I'll pass it along altogether. Um, I'd like to talk with the principals on how maybe we can schedule those a little bit differently to increase that, um, for next year, the first session. The second, the second set of conferences, we can go ahead and schedule and get the kids in here, that, parents in here, that we really need to get in here. Um, but, you know, one in three is not, it's really not much to brag about. We, we got to do a better job than that. So, we'll, we'll come up with some ideas on how we can do that, uh, to get people to come in. Um, and Michelle Harrison, Medco, she emailed me and asked if I would take Tim's, uh, vacated seat to be on their board. Um, and I said I would, so that'll be, those meetings are the fourth Tuesday of each month at four o'clock in Michelle's office. Um, and I don't know if you saw the, um, Moberch Housing press release, they did a nice job, and, um, that's on, linked on our website. Um, our kids have done a good job. I've been down there a couple times, three times, and the building's starting to take form and take shape. And kids are going to learn about what it's like in the trades, uh, in the wintertime in Moberch coming up here pretty quick. Um, and, uh, I don't envy them with that, but, um, they're doing a great job and excited about it. They're, they're very excited about doing the project, so, it's a good, really good program. And, um, this, later this week, I go to Fairbain, Minnesota, the conglomerate of, and take two days of ALICE training so that I can come back and train our staff in it. Um, that's two-day training, and, um, we'll, we'll do, we're going to plan to do, uh, a school safety training every in-service day from here on out. Um, because it's important, and, um, we're going to, we're going to build that right in. And I was surprised, there was a lot of good conversation, not, not, that didn't surprise me, but people, usually, it's a pretty quiet subject, and there's not a lot of discussion, but I had a lot of, a lot of folks, um, uh, you know, speak up on their experiences and kind of added value to what we were doing. Um, it was relevant, and, um, worked out well. And the Title I hearing was held September 25th. Um, next year, I hope to do it in July, like, like, Mr. Dr. Frederick always did it. But we hit, did have two parents come, uh, three, actually, three parents came, and, uh, we went through the PowerPoint, which I, um, also attached to your documents. Um, and that's, taking care of that, that requirements, uh, met. And the, also, the title, um, the parents' Title I groups, committees, I sent copies of those, I believe, also, for your review, in each building. Uh, the Freeman Davis and Upper Elementary is, is the elementary, that's a week. That's one group of people, not two different groups. Um, so, there's that. But, any questions or concerns?
All right, so, we added on the agenda, number four, was this approval of this waiver.
Yep. So, uh, once again, Caitlin Free's fifth-grade teacher, um, is certified to teach a number of different things. Um, she, her applicant, she's met all the requirements as per, uh, South Dakota DOE, and right now, it's just a matter of processing it. But, just to dot the i's and cross the t's, we should approve her for a waiver for this year.
Questions? I guess we need a motion to do that. So, a motion from Dustin, is there a second? Second from Levi. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Emotions carried? Um, on item number four, we had some donations that we wanted to both recognize and to approve.
Absolutely. So, the Tiger Foundation, Mrs. Seaver put in for two, um, room, um, sound systems so that the teacher wears that around, they're not going to have an amplifier, so all the kids, um, can actually hear better and, um, make sure that, uh, sometimes we have students, um, that have either IEP needs or 504 needs, but this way, when we have those systems, um, you know, we're, we're covering all that, and the kids are, um, you know, any of the kids that might have a problem hearing, uh, that's rectified between that and their devices. So, she, she put in for that, and the Tiger Foundation generously, um, purchased two, so the, both of those, one will be in Mrs. Seaver's room, and one will be in another room in Freeman Davis. We have a number of those systems in many of the, uh, rooms, and, um, you know, the goal is to get them in all of the rooms so that all of our rooms are equipped, or when the students, um, who actually have, uh, a need, have that. But, um, if you've ever gone into a classroom and they're using those, you can hear things much clearer, much better. Um, it's, they're nice systems, they really are. And also, the Booster Club, um, since the beginning of the summer, they donated two basketball backboards for the high school gym. One of them was cracked, so they replaced both. Um, they put the new facade on Tiger Stadium Grandstand, which is really sharp-looking. Um, they did that before the first football game, and they purchased an electronic scorer table with video on the front of the kids, um, for events held in the high school gym. So, um, you know, the backboards were around $10,000. I'm not, the facade, I'm not really positive, maybe $8,000. And then the electronic scorer's table was more than $50,000. So, they donated quite a bit, and, uh, you know, it's amazing. Amazing stuff for our kids.
Pretty significant donations, but part of our, basically, our policy is all donations is supposed to be accepted by the school, approved, in case somebody donated something that is not acceptable. Yeah, well, you never know.
Yeah.
But it's kind of our policy that we would take a motion and, and accept those things as donations, so, I guess I'm looking for a motion to accept that stuff.
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, and, yeah, the, the donations are pretty significant. All those things, they're very, very appreciative of them. Clear discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Emotions carried?
And with your permission, I'll write a letter on behalf of the board thanking both groups, and send it out.
We have some equipment to surplus and sell. Um, yeah, plasma, some plasma cutter equipment and electrical converter, and I guess maybe I'll let you explain a little more, but.
So, um, neither, neither piece of equipment, uh, has been used. It didn't, it never got hooked up. So, the original plasma cutter purchased through the CTE grant. Um, we had a prob, there was a problem with, um, it being three-phase. They thought they had it figured out, they got a converter, but then the converter, um, wouldn't be approved by code to be used in that building. So, uh, they got stymied there, and then I came and picked it up and tried to figure out what exactly we could do. Um, the good news is, we do have a compatible, compatible plasma cutter that has been installed, it's wired, and, um, the last, I knew they were trying to get software, um, correct with the table and the cutter. Chan, is that accurate?
I think when he comes back to Maury, then install the software, and then on a cloud basis, it'll run it on there, but everything else should be.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, so, the good news is that will be useful for the students in that class, Mr. Nas. Um, and so, we have these two pieces of equipment that, um, you know, should be surplus for sale. We, there's no way we can use them, so there's no sense in really holding on to them like dust. So.
Do you have the value of those pieces?
So, the, uh, I don't know what the resale value, but the purchase prices were about $5,000 for A, and just about, you know, $5,200 for the converter. So it's just a matter of getting the right person or district. I asked Lindy, Lindy helped us. They're out of Aberdeen and they're the ones that supplied us with the new plasma cutter. If they, you know, I told them what we had and they said, well, there'd be, you know, if you do sell it, probably going to be significantly less because the warranty's a one-year warranty and the warranty's out. But they're gonna, they work with a lot of schools and they're going to pass the word and see if people are interested and so on and so forth, but we'll give that a little, you know, couple weeks to resonate and then we'll actually put it out there and see if we have it. Yep.
I suspect if it's over another school, you may not have to take it because it'd be government entity to government entity.
That's right.
Otherwise, it always had to be on a, some public bids, otherwise.
That's what I was hoping, to give it a little bit of time and see if they could drum up any interest. Because it's a really, I mean, like if, if it were in the main building, we could have used the three-phase setup. But if, you know, it's not, we're not able to use it out there, but most schools, I would imagine, are set up where they can do that in their buildings.
I guess we need a motion to surplus for sale, these two pieces of equipment.
Double.
Motion from Talis, there's a second. Any discussion?
That came from that grant, correct? So did we have to purchase the second cutter out of our own pocket? Okay, so how much did we lose from that grant, Alvin?
Well, the, the new cutter was about $3,800. So you spent $5,000 on the original. And then you purchased a new one at $3,800. And when I came July 1st, the warranty was already out. I mean, it had already been a year. So they wouldn't, I called both companies because there's two different companies and not local. One's in Minnesota, one's in Kansas City, Kansas. And neither, they're all sort of like, geez, sorry.
The grant was, the whole grant was significantly more, I think, than this is part of it.
Correct.
And so we ended up, the original, basically, this was $10,000 for these two pieces.
Yes.
That came out of that grant or was that?
The cutter did. Cutter came out of the grant, the converter the district paid for. To try to get that to work.
The original plasma cutter, that was like $52,000. We got that and then we also got that skin steel, which was about $50,000.
And it, this, this costs a little bit more than what we originally planned. But in order to keep the $50,000 plasma cutter that they bought us, we had to do this.
Yeah, the table is a substantial piece, part of that 50-some thousand. It's a big industrial, heavy-duty table. So the, you know, the cutter is just the brain of it.
Since that was received after the grant, it's okay for us to sell that then?
Um, yeah, it is because they, I contacted the grant office and said the wrong cutter was purchased with that money. They said, well, you either need to get the table working in working order or let us know and we'll come and get the table. So the table is in working order.
And it came down to we had to purchase the $3,800, whatever pieces of equipment or those are going to take both things away.
Yeah.
Basically, what it was going to be.
Yeah. So we kind of mitigated our losses a little bit and the kids can still have the experience of using it.
I don't know if it was bad advice and whether or not it was going to work the way it was or how, but.
Not sure.
It wasn't, it wasn't the way it should have been, but to make the best of the situation, I think is kind of what we're trying to do here.
Yep.
Is there, is there something we could have done prior to know that wasn't going to work? Or was it just an oversight by somebody on our end?
I didn't.
Okay.
I think it was an oversight. I think he thought that was going to work in what we purchased when he talked to the company. I think that's what they thought, that with the converter, it would work. So then now when he got here, you know, we had the electrician look at it and it's like, it can't work. You know, we don't have the requirements.
Even if the code would allow it to be put in that building, it's the only thing that could literally run while it was running in, in both shops. So that's not ideal either. So could it work? I guess if code allowed it to, but, I mean, you'd have to shut both shops down other than when that's running, so. But we don't have that problem now. We, we, it'll be good to go.
Yeah, it was, it's an oversight by somebody. I couldn't tell you who exactly. Yeah, basically. It should have been ordered differently, basically what should have been done. Not sure, not sure why exactly, but.
Sorry, I don't want to ask that to, prior. I ask it more so like, is it something we can learn from so we can mitigate those issues in the future? You know, so we, if there's something that we didn't look at, something that we have to check the box on next time to know that we're able to use something, you know?
For sure.
Yeah, I don't know if we got some advice from electricians beforehand and/or not. I guess I don't know that for sure.
So we, I guess we've worked with the same electrician through the entire process, so. The, where it stalled is when the converter was ordered and the electrician, the electrician who we'd been working with said, well, I'm not installing that like that because it's against code. And then I came and Kim goes, here you go. It's, you know, you're 100% right, Levi. I mean, it, it's unfortunate. But at this point, I mean, the people that were making, you know, they're not here, so it's kind of a moot point. But it is, it will be serviceable for the kids and that's what the grant requires and we're happy about that.
It goes to show that when you were checking out things like grants like that, that we check all the details beforehand until something like this doesn't happen again. All right. Oh, we need a, I got a motion to surplus this. We need to vote unless there's more discussion. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those both, motion's carried. We wanted to discuss the resolutions. I just played resolutions and beliefs.
Your area of expertise.
I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at them. And this is, yep. The, when Heath comes out on the 5th, he will actually be going through some of these also, more questions to ask. But I don't know, I probably just opened up for questions. I didn't want to go into detail on any of these. The, some of these changes, like you know, it's on two of the attendance, there was a law passed, basically. And there's, there's reasoning on some of this, basically, and addressed some of this. It's kind of made some of those redundant on the, also the age. They combined some amendments and different things in here too, I think, to try to streamline things a little bit. I don't know if there was any really big. Trying to streamline things, trying to, there was some things that haven't come up for a while in the legislature. I think they took out, I guess, if you have questions. Otherwise, I would also encourage you to come on the 5th and ask questions to Heath too, if you have more questions. And then on the delegate assembly coming up in November, all the school districts go to peer and vote, basically, on this and make, basically it becomes a platform for the organization as to what we're going to talk to the legislature about, legislature about what things we'll support, what things we don't support. So like, if you happen to be the delegate going to the delegate assembly, this is what you'd be voting on, at least. Last couple of years, Chris Fried went, I've gone. I usually am at the meeting anyway because I'm on the board and so I've been the, I've been the delegate. And I've had Chris do it for a few years. And then the point that comes up, if somebody wants to do it, I could go as the alternate or, because I'll probably be there anyway. If someone else had decided to be our delegate, that's fine also. Does anybody have any of these they wanted to discuss or go over? I think you emailed them, right? You were in email. You can have my copy. Yeah, and you can also ask, you know, me or you questions. Have you had any, like I said, multitudes cleanup stuff? I didn't actually sit on the committee this year. I sat on that committee many years. It's kind of nice to have somebody else looking at it at once. Yeah, and sometimes it's nice to have new people looking at it too because they see the same thing every year and it's like, it's the same old, same old. Somebody new looks at it, they have a new perspective. If not, that's basically all I wanted to do is, is open up for questions, discussion on it. Which leads right into the next item of appointing a delegate. And like I say, I've, I've done it. I can do it. Somebody else wants to do it, we could appoint you. I'll probably be there anyway. Our board meeting is in conjunction with that. Our association's board meeting is usually the night before and morning of and then they have our delegate assembly, kind of runs right into it. I don't know if you were interested in doing it or somebody else.
When is it?
November 19th. 19th, I'm pretty sure I got that. We have to have that turned in this week, I think.
Most of the time it takes, yeah.
Here. Make sure I've got the date. November 21st, let's try that. The Friday, November 21st. 19th is the Wednesday. That wouldn't work very good. Always Friday, usually starts at lunch and runs about three hours, two to three hours. Up here. And I think it's, and it's around quarter mostly. I don't have the location, but that is the. So I guess open up, if somebody else wanted to go over. It's kind of an interesting, actually, experience to get to hear what all the other schools think because you've got, over half the schools usually come, you know, 150 schools about, so about 80, 90, maybe even 100. I would think we need a motion. Somebody do it. I mean, I'll do it. Somebody wanted to make that motion for me to do it.
Let's move.
All right, the motion is second. Levi already seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Is there a place for an alternate on there?
I'm sorry?
Is there a place for an alternate delegate? I think we do, we do want an alternate too.
Yeah.
Somebody want to be the alternate? Okay, I have a motion for, I'll make, I'll let you.
At least it'll be the alternate.
By Levi? All right, I have a motion to second for Lisa to be the alternate. Any other discussion? And that might be good. Hannah's having her baby pretty soon and possibly might be out there, but it's always good to have a backup. That's what made me think of it, actually. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. We'll send that in this week, right, Kim, with me as the delegate, her as the alternate. We have some positions to approve. There's just the three?
Yes. Sharing of the publications supervisor. They talked each other into it.
Yeah, they did last year and they didn't want to do it too bad again this year.
Always modified basketball coach.
As you notice, I'm related to the one locations supervisor. I might just stay out of this whole thing, but. Right, a motion from Lisa, is there a second? From Levi? Like I say, I'll probably just, put me down as an abstention. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. Resignations, you had one?
Yep. Person, basically, this was their first year and I think it was a little bigger job than thought, so. Do something different.
We advertise for that then?
We are.
Did we need to, did we need to prove that?
We need to, I need to start, break, put that in, yeah.
We need a motion to accept this resignation and an advertise for that position. All right, a motion from Lisa, is there a second? Second from Talis. Any questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. My, I didn't know it tends as a juror, but is there more? Any other business to come?
You're all set with those courses you wanted to take? So Emily will call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Just go back and forth, get that taken care of.
Okay.
Yep.
There was some training she wanted, school training she wanted to take and I, I told them, I said, as long as in the budget, I don't think you need any other approval for training as long as it's our budget sold. Anybody wants to do the different online courses and stuff. And I mentioned that webinar partly I knew about because I'm moderating it. And Lisa Snidinger is one of the panelists and so is Shane Roth from SMET. She's from Woonshoggett. And then there's, there's actually, it's put on by the Rural School Association, which is a organization of rural schools that, you know, we've worked with a little bit of SBA, but they do a lot of stuff for rural schools. So it's just a panel, basically, discussion about things that are going on in rural schools.
So for 30-plus years, I was a member of Rural Schools Association. And then now here I am in South Dakota and I'm not, so it's kind of interesting.
Basically, the program has been put on by them. They're just partnering with, yeah, and I, I get to moderate it, I guess. And kind of a panel discussion. They wanted some school board members from some rural states and they got a couple from Florida, maybe another one from another state. See what it's like.
It's a good group. They've got a great track record and.
Yeah. We've been doing a little bit of partnering with them, rural stuff. Yeah, it's all good.
Is that the November 5th one? Or when is that one?
No, this is in October 20. Let's see, it's in, I have it on my calendar for that too. It's like next Thursday. See today, it's called Y Rural. It's on Tuesday, the 21st. It's Why Rural Matters, People, Places and Possibilities. The Zoom meeting at 11:00 a.m., 11:00 to 12:00 a.m. that day. And that'd be central time. It's noon Eastern, I think. I, I will try to send advertising for him to. I, I will try to send advertising for him to him and maybe to all of us. See if anybody's interested and you could sign them if you want. I'm pretty sure they put it on free of charge this time, so. If anybody's interested, I don't know what it's, I don't actually know what it's all like about. I'm gonna find out in my meeting on Thursday. Otherwise, yeah, we can book for a motion to adjourn, I guess. Motion from Lisa, is there a second? Second from Levi. Kind of a short meeting, it seems like. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those both, motion's carried and we will be adjourned. I need to send this.
I don't think I got the resolutions either. Was that on a separate email by themselves or was it in that other package or?
I didn't get them either, but I got them all.
I saw them from the stage. I didn't see them on the email.
Tyler had sent it and there was a link in there to them.
Were they posted, were those documents posted to the website?